Good evening, everyone. It's 5:00. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the -- and City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. There are no -- one, there are no items in front of me for the audience to speak at this point in time.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We have two agendized closed sessions, however, we do not need to go in on item number A. We only need to go in on item B, which is real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8. Concerns significant number of parcels immediately north of Southern California Logistics Airport, the negotiating parties are the Inland Energy Group and Doug Robertson, City Manager. And to the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately preceding the 7:00 meeting.
No further action required at the council at this time. We will adjourn to closed session. Called the meeting to order, and first of all, thank all of you for being here. This will be the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. We have returned from closed session. I'd ask the City Attorney if they could report.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We had two items listed on the agenda for closed session, item A and item B. We only held a closed session with respect to item B, real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8. The properties in question north of Southern California Logistics are all listed on the agenda by parcel number, and the parties are listed on the agenda, and at this point there is no reportable action.
Thank you. We're going to have two things, the invocation and the pledge. The invocation will be Pastor Larry White, and after the invocation, if you remain standing, Mr. Don Trapp, the Fire Chief, will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you bow your hearts and heads with me as we pray? Oh, Lord, we come to you tonight, and we are so thankful for this great nation that we live in, and we pray your continued blessings over it. We're thankful for this state that we live in as well, and your continued blessings there, and then for this local community, the community of Victorville. And we pray, Lord, for your continued blessings here in Victorville as well. And I pray this, I thank you for these community leaders that sacrifice so much, their commitment to the people of this community, the late nights, the early mornings, their devotion and their labor of love for the city of Victorville. And I pray for each community leader tonight, that you would give them wisdom, wisdom to make great decisions on behalf of this city, courage, the courage to make the tough decisions and deal with difficulties and challenges, balancing budgets and all the things that are before them. And then, Lord, I pray for each of our community leaders' families, that you would bless them, and that, Lord, you would keep them safe, their families, their grandchildren, their children, their mothers and fathers. Lord, that you would strengthen their families and that you would keep them healthy. In your name we pray these things. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor White. We have no presentations that I'm aware of. City Clerk, if you would present the agenda to the council.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the City Clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. There are two revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda. One is for agenda item number 19 on the dais for the council and available to the public is council policy CP 83-3 regarding naming of parks and facilities and a publication from the State of California regarding the naming of freeways, highways, structures, and other appurtenances in California. The other revision is in regards to item number 20. It's a supplemental staff report from the City Attorney regarding the Red Flex contract. And those are all the revisions I have tonight, Mayor Cox.
Thank you. Thank you, City Clerk. At this point in time, for the public comments to be addressed to the City Council, I have three cards. If you would like to address the council, I have four cards. Please fill out the card and bring them forward. I'm going to ask the individuals to address the council as I receive them. First would be Jim Pickett.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of council. My name is Jim Pickett, and I noticed in the invitations, I mean, the prayer we had, he mentioned the safety of our kids and our community. I have one thing to say, and I just wanted to bring it up to the council member. I've been here 11 years, and between Park and Amathus, it's been 45 and 40 miles an hour. All of a sudden, there's a sign up between Amagosa and Amathus for 50 miles an hour, which to me is ridiculous, because you have Hook Elementary School, you have a park, you have a shopping mall, you have a church that's very active. 50 miles an hour is way too fast. And in fact, if you, council members, would take a ride, just past Amagosa, there's a new sign up, 50 miles an hour. Approximately 30 yards from there, there's a sign that says "Crossing" with the kids on it. Little bit farther than there is a flashing light for kids, for a school. Then there's Hook Elementary School, and a brand-new sign right in front of the school, 50 miles an hour. And then, once you get on the other side of El Livalo, it's back down to 40. Also, in between Amathus, I mean, Amagosa and El Livalo, there's a crosswalk, I think at Rosewood, Rosemead or something like that. And right by the crosswalk, there's a fence, a block fence. Now, a kid could be walking down there. If somebody's doing 50 miles an hour, there's no way they could stop if some kid stepped off that curve. My wife was hit in the rear end, because she had to stop for some kids going across the street. I saw a kid get hit by a car, but the car was going very slow, because he was walking his dog, and the dog stepped out in the street. I don't see any justification for increasing the speed from 40 to 50. I talked to the city engineer, one of the gentlemen, and he said it's controlled by the state. And to me, I didn't believe it. But he said a study was made, and they did a study on the traffic flow. Behind that study, they decided to put the sign up for 50 miles an hour. To me, it doesn't make any sense at all. The traffic was doing 40 miles an hour already, and they were going over 40 miles an hour along that section anyway, over the speed limit, over the speed limit. So now they got 50 miles an hour. What do you think the traffic's going to be moving? 40, 50? No way. You've got a playfield, you've got a school, kids are always walking up and down that street.
10 seconds, Mr. Pickett.
Okay, but that's -- and as you noticed in the last few sec -- in the paper the other day, Sheriff Victorville Station addresses school bus zone safety issues. To me, that's a safety issue. Don't put 50 miles an hour on the school zone. That's too fast.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett.
Thank you.
The next speaker would be Brian Rhodes.
Hi, how you doing? I wanted to address a public safety issue that we obviously have all had in the City of Victorville for numerous years. I've been a resident here for 31 years, and I've seen lots of different things go on throughout this city, all over the place. The neighborhood that I live in now, we have a public safety issue that has to do with the animal control of all things. Normally, it's like the Sheriff's Department trying to control the gangs, but we also have a problem with animal control, where they don't respond to people when we're calling them for emergency calls. Even the Sheriff's Department has called them for emergency calls, and they're not showing up. And let alone today, I took two pictures of dogs running loose in my neighborhood on my street, and it's just not being taken care of by the Animal Control Department. And we pay a lot of money in taxes for these guys' salaries and that, and their attitudes just aren't that good, when they start telling people that, "Well, next time a dog goes to attack you, just carry a gun and shoot the damn thing." That is like the most asinine thing I've ever heard from a public officer. I mean, it's really ridiculous, and I think that the Animal Control Department really needs to be looked into by the City Council and the Mayor's Department on how they respond to emergency calls, even emergency calls from the Sheriff's Department. Five million people were injured last year by dog bites. This year alone, six people have been killed in the State of California from dog bites. It's something that's getting a little out of control, and I think it's time that the City Council would please look into it and see what kind of operations they are -- how they're handling their calls.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. I responded in an email to you before I came in here tonight, and that has been under study for about four days now, and we're waiting for a report. You'll hear from the city on this. The next individual, Mr. Al Cattio.
It's crazy that I have to come here in front of the City Council to get a bunch of weeds cleaned off Riviera Drive. I've been trying for six months. I called the Public Works, because most of it's on sidewalk, but the sidewalk is dirt. It's still city property. The code enforcement, phew. I called them three times, gave them the right address. The guy calls me up, and of course, I gave him the address across the street, and you got to look, because it's a vacant lot. He calls me up, he says, "I went over there, I didn't see no weed." I said, "What's the address?" He had the address backwards, after me giving it to code enforcement three times, and Doug's secretary, and she got him on the ball real quick, and he had the wrong address. And I told him, "There's something else going on that you better take care of right away. That's a lot more serious." He goes, "What are you saying?" And I said, "Oh, what the hell am I dealing with here?" And I just gave up. Anyway, that's how hard it is to get something done in my neighborhood. My neighborhood is like the forgotten neighborhood. The city never does a damn thing for it. And them people have been paying taxes there for 50 years to the city. Also, the four-city thing hitting together for the police department and the laboratory was my idea. I presented it to the City Council several years ago. The only one that was here was the city attorney, none of the other people were here. And then I even went to Hesperia, I had a meeting with Rita Vogler about it, and she liked it. Nobody wanted to deal with the City of Victorville at the time, no matter what. The City of Victorville was like poison. I called Apple Valley and told them about it. They liked the idea, but they didn't want to discuss it. But that was my idea, good or bad, and you guys have to figure out how to make it work. If you can make it work, it's a great idea. If you can't, at least I gave it a shot, but I want you to know, that was my idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cattio. The last card that I have is Mr. Dennis Morris.
Counsel, I'm here in response to item number 19, renaming of a city street, and--
Would you like to hold your comments until we get to 19?
That'd be fine, sir.
Okay. If someone will remind me when we get to 19, Mr. Morris wants to speak on that item. Thank you. That's all the cards that I have. All right. We have Library Board of Trustees, consent calender, item number four.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem McEckern, second by Councilmember Vias. Councilmember Vias, may I get a vote from you on that item? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Didn't mean to get in front of you. The next item, I believe the next will be item 5, 6, 10, and 15. Is that--
I believe that's correct, sir.
And who's going to make that presentation?
Tonight, we have a presentation from Ken Alamam, who is the partner with the audit firm that did our audit this year.
Thank you very much. I'm actually going to be speaking on the audit of all of the financial statements that have been presented to you for tonight's meeting, and so, if that's okay. It's not appropriate to--
Yes, that's -- thank you very much.
And so, they're going to bring my presentation right up on the screen in just a few minutes. So we've completed your audit of the financial statements of the City of Victorville and all of the major component units of the city, and I want to make a few comments about the financial statements themselves, because that is the focal point of the annual financial statement audit. And the first thing I want to point out is that in fiscal year 2011 and 2012, there were major financial events that had a significant impact on the financial statements of the City of Victorville and its component units. The first thing I want to talk about was the statewide dissolution of redevelopment agencies throughout the state of California. That action by the State of California required that all of the redevelopment agencies be dissolved, and that the assets of those dissolved redevelopment agencies be moved into a fiduciary trust fund to be held on behalf of the other taxing entities which would receive the distribution of those assets. Previous to this dissolution process, redevelopment agencies were included within the financial statements of the cities in California, because the City Council had governance authority over those redevelopment agencies. The movement of these assets into this fiduciary trust fund, pending the payment of all obligations and the liquidation and distribution of assets, created what the accounting standards require to be reported as an extraordinary loss in the financial statements for the movement of those assets to that trust fund. Every city in California that had a redevelopment agency had that experience, and all of their financial statements, if they had a redevelopment agency, reflect this extraordinary loss, which is essentially moving restricted money from the city's financial statements to this trust fund, pending the distribution of these assets to the other taxing entities pursuant to state law. The other major event that I want to -- there's three other major events that I want to comment on that had a big impact on your financial statements. One is that in fiscal year 2011 and 2012, there was a significant reduction in the expenditures of the city's general fund. And also, I wanted to point out that in fiscal year 2011, 2012, the fund balance of the city's general fund increased rather than decreased, as had been occurring in prior years. And then finally, eight months after the balance sheet date of the financial statements that we're providing to you, the city received $54 million from the Carter &amp; Burgess settlement that was received last month. All of these events had a major impact on one of the things that is required to be considered during the audit process. Auditing standards require that the audit firm include language in his opinion on the financial statements whenever there is substantial doubt about the ability of the city or the entity reporting to pay its obligations as they become due for a 12-month period following the balance sheet date. Due to the significant reduction of the general fund expenditures and the city's receipt of $54 million in eight months after the balance sheet date, the opinion for the 2012 financial statements of the city do not contain this language. For only the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority has this language been applied, due to the airport authority's dependency upon redevelopment funding from VITA, and due to the continued insufficiency of pledged revenues in the airport authority to meet its obligations as they become due. This slide here summarizes the activity of the city's general fund, and it compares the activity for 2012 compared to 2011. And you could see by looking at this slide that in 2011, the fund balance of the general fund declined by $4.4 million. In 2012, the fund balance of the general fund increased by $638,000. The primary cause for this result was the city reducing its general fund expenditures by almost $3 million. Let's take a closer look at the details that make up this result. First, let's take a look at revenues. This slide shows that general fund revenues in 2012 were slightly less than the revenues in 2011. In 2012, declines in license and permit revenue and intergovernmental revenue were almost completely offset by a $5.5 million increase in tax revenues for the general fund. On this slide here, I've summarized the expenditures of the general fund by major function, and you could see by looking at this slide here that the city in 2012 reduced its spending in almost every area of spending, in every area of spending in its general fund, except for public safety. This resulted in 2012 expenditures coming in at $2.9 billion less than general fund expenditures in 2011. I'm required to remind you that the objectives and purpose and focus of a financial statement audit is on detecting significant misstatements in the financial statement amounts. When audit tests indicate that the risk of significant misstatement is low, the auditor gives an opinion without qualification that the financial statements are fairly stated. Now, when we go about doing our test for significant misstatement, we learn a lot about your accounting records, and professional standards require that I report to you certain conditions that warrant the attention by management. Our written report to the City of Victorville included comments on the items that are indicated on this slide, that there were a number of year-end adjustments that were attended to during the audit process, the insufficiency of airport revenues to meet the bond requirements of the airport authority, the need for an enhanced analysis of grant funds, the continued monitoring of interfund activity, more timely cash reconciliations, follow-up on a large accumulation of vacation leave balances, adding clarification language to employee time sheets, and a recommendation to commence periodic financial reporting, or to recommence periodic financial reporting to City Council throughout the year. These items were discussed with management and the audit committee during the course of the audit, and management agreed with their comments and has developed a plan to attend to these items. As required by the reporting requirements for government audits, a number of reports have been issued that are in your report packet for today's meeting. These reports communicate the matters that I'm addressing in my presentation today. These reports include an opinion on the basic financial statements of the city, separate opinions on separately issued financial statements for the Victorville Water District, the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, the Southern California Logistics Railroad Authority, and the single audit report, which provides to the federal government a report on the results of compliance testing that is directed by the federal government to be applied in financial statement audits for local governments, a report on the city's compliance with the state mandated appropriation limitation, and then a summary of our audit results to this body and the audit committee that again are being covered in my meeting to you today. In my concluding remarks, I do want to point out that, first of all, that I did meet last month with the audit committee and reviewed with the audit committee the financial statements that have been issued and the results of our audit testing. I also want to point out that significant improvements have been made by the City of Victorville with respect to its financial reporting over the last 12 months. This year, in this year's basic financial statements, there has been appended to the basic financial statements a section that is called Management's Discussion and Analysis. This is a section that is required by the Government Accounting Standards Board for management to comment on the -- what the numbers in the financial statements mean to the reader. It provides an opportunity for management to give guidance to the reader, to interpret the amounts in the financial statements, and what they tell the reader about the financial activity of the city. This information is prepared entirely by the financial management of the city and has been included in the financial report. Another very important addition to the financial report was the addition at the end, at the back of the annual financial report, for a full complement of statistical schedules. These schedules give valuable information to the reader about the operational activity of the city. It puts that operational activity into a multi-year historical context, and it gives the reader a lot of information to evaluate the city's financial condition in the history of the city. These two sections that were again prepared in their entirety by city financial management are outside the scope of the opinion on the basic financial statements, because the auditor is not permitted to opine on these, because these amounts, these schedules include multi-year data that is outside the scope of the financial statement-- data that is outside the scope of the financial statement audit process and includes subjective commentary that is not subject to the objective evaluation process of the audit test. However, they do represent very valuable enhancements to the city's financial reporting process, and they have allowed the city's annual financial report to be promoted to the status of a comprehensive annual financial report, or what we call in the profession a CAFR. The comprehensive annual financial report is the most robust form of financial reporting that is available and applicable to local governments and represents an achievement that the city should take great pride in. And finally, I do want to comment that I have completed, we have completed all of the audit tests that are required by the auditing standards, and we've provided an opinion without qualification that the financial statements of the city and its component units are fairly stated in all material respects. And that completes my presentation.
Ken, thank you very much. Any questions? No other questions from Mr. Kennedy?
Just a couple, Ken. Thank you very much for your presentation. And I'm, obviously, from the results of your report tell us that our, not our only focus, but we need to be focused on the airport authority and the financial issues there. I think we've done a good job in all other areas. The airport authority is struggling. And as I look at a cash flow statement, and that's kind of where I wanted to focus, when you add back depreciation and whatnot, the actual operating activities at the airport, meaning the rent income, landing fees, and those various against operating expenses, generated about a $1.6 million surplus. I'll call it a profit, but it's a cash surplus, which I think from an operational standpoint should give us a lot of comfort. Our big problem out there, as I read this statement, is that the property tax revenues flowing in aren't sufficient to cover the bond payments primarily. I mean, I'm simplifying it, but the principal and interest, it's just not sufficient. We're short about $6 million overall this last year. Is that a pretty fair reading of that condition?
It is. You put it in a nutshell exactly what the issue is there, which has been complicated by the dissolution of redevelopment agencies, because these are redevelopment funds to a large degree that are flowing through to the airport authority.
The other thing, and just, just to comment on it, and I'd like to make, you have classified some inter-fund receivables and payables as non-current, although we know that in this current year, those have been satisfied, and I think based on what you knew at the end of the year, non-current would be the correct presentation. But I, but I think it is important to understand that that series of $20 million inter-fund transactions have been cleared up.
That is a very good point.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question. On page three of your report on compliance and other matters, on your inter-fund borrowings, it states that certain inter-fund borrowings are not formally approved by the city council. Then you go into talking about the landscape maintenance and drainage facilities and the Are you saying that, that there's been an inter-fund loan borrowings recently, this last year?
That's an excellent question. And to put that, this comment in perspective, and really, this is a communication item for management to be, to follow and be attentive to. This situation is a consequence of fund accounting. All of the funds of the city are in the same cash pool. And so, when one fund has negative cash, the accounting standards require that we recognize the reality that when one fund has negative cash, it is really borrowing from other funds of the city and the funds that have cash. And so, this, the two borrowings in question here are the, are the consequence of funds during the fiscal year 2012 ending up with negative cash balances that required the recognition of that inter-fund borrowing. So these were not transactions that could be foreseen in advance, but rather were a consequence of the financial activity in the funds of the city in 2012.
Okay. In the grand jury report, they, they made mention of the inter-fund loan borrowing that took place, and our city manager said that was not going to happen again. So this could not have been helped.
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
It wasn't like he intentionally did it after he was told not to do it?
Right. Because even if you, if you can budget ahead what the ending cash is going to be in every fund of the city, and you could budget that, it's impossible to make that determination with absolute precision. So on occasion, there will be this situation that arises out of the normal process of fund accounting and financial reporting.
Okay. And then my next question is regarding the financial statements. It says here that the finance department does not regularly present, summarize financial analysis to the city council to aid in its stewardship of the city. That, that's disturbing to me. I mean, how serious, I mean, to me, that's pretty serious because we're making financial decisions every meeting regarding this authority, and yet, there is no financial statements in place.
When we discussed this with management, they were in full agreement with what you just said, and they recognized the importance of providing this reporting to city council. And they indicated that there have been staffing reductions that have, and system conversions that have complicated the ability to do that on a timely basis, and they made a commitment to attend to that as quickly as they could.
I guess I was confused when you, when your last statement was that you felt that the financial statements were stated fairly. But how, how do you say that when there was no financial statement?
The financial statements that we're opining on are the year-end annual financial statements that are prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. This particular recommendation had to do with keeping city council apprised of the financial status of each fund of the city throughout the fiscal year. That's more of an element of accounting control and internal control and fiscal management, but doesn't speak directly to what we are opining on, which is the annual financial statements that are issued at the end of the year.
Okay, so the yearly ones were done?
Absolutely.
And that's what you based your decision on? Is that what you just said to me?
Correct. In financial statement audits, we are not given an opinion on the monthly data that is compiled on an interim basis.
Okay. Mr. McCacken?
Ken, would it be fair to say that because of the way that money flows in a municipal government, that to some extent, inter-fund use of funds is kind of basic and, and critical and commonplace for most cities?
Absolutely. And what the accounting standards require is that, first of all, what you just said is absolutely true. All local governments use fund accounting. They all, all the funds in every local government share in the same cash and investment pool. And what the accounting standards require is accountability with respect to that activity. It requires that the financial statements recognize when that sharing and presence in the same pool results in inter-fund borrowings. And it requires that that be recognized, disclosed, and then monitored to ensure that those funds are repaid in a timely and appropriate manner. So it's all about accountability and proper disclosure and reporting, but the, the process itself is not in and of itself something that is inappropriate.
Yes, so the water district is receiving money every month and paying bills every month. That's an even flow, but the city gets property taxes twice a year.
Good point.
Two big chunks. And sales tax comes in, what, four times a year? But during that interim, it's necessary to pull the money from somewhere to pay, pay bills, so that inter-fund borrowing is not inappropriate.
It's not inappropriate. What's, what's necessary is that it be recognized in the accounting records.
Yeah.
Mr. McCacken?
Well, I'm definitely pleased we finally, after four years, have gotten to an unqualified opinion, at least with respect to the city, and I compliment staff and, as well as your firm, and working through that and all the recommendations that we've had over the years. One of the areas that concerns me, and I'm, this question's more for our management, not so much for you, is, is to the grant funding. That item has been on every single audit since I've been on the city council, and it seems to never go away. What can we do to make sure that it goes away this year?
That's a good question. The grant funding is actually very difficult for us because we have been very successful at obtaining federal grants. We expend the dollars and then have to go and justify it and get those dollars returned to us. So Ken's firm and management have had a very similar discussion for the past several years, saying, look, the grant funding that you got onto us for not having in place yet, not getting our, our reimbursement yet, we got those reimbursements, but now we have new grants that we, we're spending dollars on, and it's simply more of a timing issue. It takes time to get the money from the federal government. It takes time to put together the documentation to show the federal government that we are, we expended it in an appropriate manner. And it really comes down to staffing, much like the, the financial reporting issue, it comes down to staffing. One of the reasons why we have a clean audit is because of cuts that were made, and those cuts affected every department, with the exception of public safety, including finance. Unfortunately, with the reduction in staffing, some of those things take a little bit more time, and grant funding is, is one of them. One of our voluntary layoffs was our accountant who handled our grant funding for the city. And, you know, we're struggling to, to make do with the staff that's remaining because we didn't replace that position. Similarly, on the financial reporting, the analyst who used to do the quarterly reports for the council left the city about a year ago for a temporary time, and then ultimately she's now retired. So we hope to fill that position very soon. And answering kind of two questions at once here, the grant funding, I don't have a timeframe for. It's something that we have to live with until we can get enough funding to have enough staff to be more timely with it. We are, we have processes in place to try to get it as quickly as we can, but it simply is a slow process.
Well, and if I might follow up on that, and this question goes to both you and to you, Ken, and, and that is to the federal process. And so, my question then becomes, is this not an issue in every city that applies for federal grants? I mean, the reality is, is that even if we had the proper staffing in place, would we ever not have this on our audit? Because my, my understanding is, is that based upon how we get reimbursed and, and, you know, how we expend those funds, that you're not likely to ever take this issue off of our audit because of, of that discrepancy in time and collecting that money. So if that's in fact the case, and we can recognize the fact that it's about the federal government and the federal process, then why does it need to be on here?
You've asked a good question, and Doug very accurately described the situation. The balances that we see in the financial statements indicate that there, there may be some, it's not just a timing problem, there could be some adjustments that need to be made. For example, let me give you one example. If you have a fund balance in a grant fund, it may indicate that there was eligible expenditures incurred in the general fund that need to be, that have been, need to be identified as being reimbursed by those grant funds, and in fact, had in fact been identified in the reporting to the federal government. So the fund balances indicate that there is some analysis that could make more accurate the financial reporting of the financial statements. And the reason it's on, on, this, you're right, this is going to stay in the, our recommendations until the matter's cleared, but it doesn't need to be cleared tomorrow. We don't want it to fall off your radar screen because it indicates that there's something that needs to be looked into. But the thing that you need to keep in mind is that every single year, the city has qualified to have what I refer to as a single audit, which means that your, your major grant funds are being very rigorously tested for conformity to federal regulations, including the sufficiency of supporting documentation for the reimbursements that are received by the federal government. So that's a very comforting process, that that process has not indicated questioned cost or amounts that need to be returned to the federal government. And so the fund balances here represent more of a, kind of a fine tuning of your records to give recognition to some of the activities that, that were supportive to that process, but maybe need to be, some adjustments need to be booked so that the funds can be properly applied to the right cost center.
Okay, then last question. Based upon that, can we get there? Is there ever a period in time, assuming we have enough staffing and we deal with all of that type of stuff, where that issue would go away? Because from my perspective, having seen it on every single audit since I've been on this council, I'm concerned about that. I'd like to see us move in a direction of, we've eliminated a number of things that we've been dinged on, so to speak, on the audit, but can we get to a point where that one would go away, in your opinion?
I'll leave that to management to respond to. I just, I want to just mention that this is not an uncommon finding in our audits. It's, we are, we look very carefully at the grant funds, and it's not uncommon for us to make this comment. And one of the reasons for that is that it's a very time-consuming process to resolve because a lot of these, the fund balance by its very definition represents an accumulation of financial activity over many, many years, and it can, takes a lot of staff time to analyze that activity. I think it needs to be done, but I do think that the city needs to set the appropriate priorities and line this up in there in line with the, its available resources. I don't want it to fall in the cracks. I want it to be recognized, but I do want management to make the appropriate decisions in terms of what is the most important objective to be attended to first.
Ken, you read my mind. It is something that we can accomplish. It will be very difficult, and, you know, the fact that it keeps recurring is because we have been successful at grant work, and I would hope that it doesn't get eliminated because we don't have grants coming in. Quite honestly, that was going to be my, my comment, was that it's really a prioritization. To me, it's much more important that we provide you with regular financial reports like we used to than it is that we catch up on these grant reimbursements. And so, the financial reporting is going to take precedence. In fact, I'm going to put Adele Moser, our CFO, on the spot a little bit, but I believe that you're going to have a new quarterly report in April, possibly even at the next meeting. I don't know. She's shaking her head yes, so I guess I got that one right. But it's, we certainly want to do that, but in the list of items that we need to address or have needed to address for these years, I would say that this grant issue is probably, if not at the bottom, it's very close to the bottom of, of the prioritization list.
Would it be fair to say we could solve that?
Councilmember Garcia, and then we'll get back to you, Mr. Kennedy. Do you have any questions? No questions? Mr. Kennedy?
Would it be fair to say we could solve that problem if we took a cop off the street and spent it on that instead?
Check your head and O real quick.
My concern is, I'll just raise it, do you see any indication that there have been costs incurred on these grants that have not been requested for reimbursement?
No, that is a focused risk in the audit, something that we look very carefully at. So this really is more of just lining up the debits and credits.
There's no further questions? Doug Robertson, last word?
Yes, I do want to thank Ken and his team at Meyerhopp and McCann for working with us over all of these years to get to this point. It's a tremendous accomplishment, both for the city council, who's made the hard decisions to make the cuts that we've made, and then also for, of course, the management team here at the city of Victorville, and especially to Adele Moser, our chief financial officer, and Pat Rosenberg, our accounting manager, who, for this year, thank you very much, Adele Moser got a title change and a little bit of a responsibility change as of July 1st. And essentially, although I was somewhat leading them, she and Pat and her team handled effectively all of the audit work and the work with, with your firm without including me, except as necessary, and that was much appreciated. I have plenty of other things to do. So I do want to thank her and thank your team as well. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you very much. For the city council, you have items five, six, 10, and 15, and this is to receive and file, not approve. We need a motion to that effect.
Motion by councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem McCacken. Motion carries unanimously.
Unless I'm totally lost, we're on item seven.
Correct.
Agenda item, item sub written communications, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, award of a contract for insulation and repair fencing at SCLA.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 8. This is Project CC-13-054, award for aircraft rescue and firefighting truck equipment. This is equipment for the accessories. This is not the truck itself.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 9. Ground lease agreement buying between UNAVCO Inc. and SCLA.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 10 has been taken care of, I believe. Is that correct?
Correct.
Item 11. This is to reject the bids. Do you need a motion to do this? If so, the chair is open for motion.
Also item 16, are you considering both at the same time?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. That would be item 11 and 16.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item 12, under the Victor Valley Water District, written communications, general service agreement with Zinner Performance Water District Staff.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on this. Sean, I know from my Water District days that the Victor Valley, the old Victor Valley Water District customers are on the AMR system. Are all Baldi Mesa customers on that system now? Is everybody in that?
Not yet. In fact, this is a multi-year program where we would be, actually at the end of this contract, we would be almost at the 50% of the combined district.
When do you think we'll have everybody on it?
I think there's another two years in the program.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 13 is consent calendar. Unless something is to be pulled off, they can all be approved in one motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Vias. Mayor Cox, may I get a vote from you on this item? Motion carries unanimously.
Item 15 has been handled earlier. Is that correct?
Correct.
Item 16.
You need to do 14?
Yes, item 14 needs to be acted on.
This has been, wasn't this in conjunction with another item?
That was the housing.
14.
14's consent calendar.
14 was consent.
You had two consent calendars in a row. Housing trust consent and then the city council consent.
All right, 14. I was running down the road by myself.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Now, item 15, that's been already handled. Item 16, and I thought that was handled.
That one has been.
Item 17, presentation of a request to approve award to install one picnic shelter at Village Park, Project BM-13-017, in the amount of $56,420.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 18, amended restating a loan arrangement buying between the City of Victorville on behalf of Development Impact Fee Fire Fund and City of Victorville Development Impact Fee Road Fund. It's a restatement of loan agreement in lieu of a promissory note.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 19, there's been a request that this would be continued for a couple of weeks at the same time. We have information, and we have a discussion by the council, and we also have three cards on item 19. I will take these in the way they were presented to me, and the first would be Mr. Charles Glasper. Good evening, councilmembers.
I come before you, as I did the last time, expressing a concern and asking for your input in action on the overpass. Now, I see in the bulletin there it says street. I don't think we were asking for a street to be named after Dr. King, it was the overpass that's under construction at this time. So it's also been brought to our attention that it seems like there's some confusion as to who is in jurisdiction over this overpass. After reading the excerpt you have attached to the agenda, it seems like that, I guess, the apertures and the structures and everything else is falling on the assembly's guidelines. But we were led to believe, after talking to one of the assemblymen, that if the city is responsible for the maintenance of that particular portion of the construction, then the city would have the responsibility of doing that. So we're kind of confused and a flux or whatever right now, and we would really like to find out, after reading the paper this morning, that there is a lot of confusion about this request. So we would like to know just where we stand on this right now. What do we have to do? I think we've already met with the city manager. Four of us met, had a meeting on the 6th, and we were informed that a resolution was being performed, I mean, composed and was going to be sent forward. Doesn't seem like that's going anywhere right now, based on what we read in the paper and also the confusion about who's in charge of this.
I have two other speakers. You have some good questions. Mr. Doug Robertson, would you care to respond?
I would love to, actually. Yeah, we met, had a good meeting, and I indicated at that point in time that, based on their request, I would be bringing a resolution to the city council at the April 2nd agenda in support of their efforts to ask the state legislature to pass the law, the bill, whatever it takes from the state legislature to name the interchange in memory of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Since that meeting, we heard from Senator Donnelly's office, I think actually through your group, Charlie, that they believed, after talking with both Caltrans and Sandbag, that it was actually a city issue because the city would be providing the maintenance. That was different than what Mayor Protem McEckern had heard, who actually sits on the Sandbag board. So we asked for the actual Caltrans policy, and it very clearly states that the interchange for the type of signage that you were requesting would be up to the state legislature to approve. So I think going to either the assemblyman or senator is the appropriate way to do that, and the appropriate way for the city to support that would be either through a letter or through a resolution. My intent was and still is to bring that resolution or a letter to the council, give you the option, I guess, on April 2nd. Since that meeting also, I had heard from Mayor Cox that he had some input from other community groups suggesting that there were other groups of people, as well as other individuals, who are also deserving of some kind of honoring within the City of Victorville. Based on those two issues, which the one I think we've resolved since it's been put on the agenda, but the time the agenda was about to be posted Wednesday, actually, of last week, I asked the city clerk to re-agendize the same item that was here two weeks ago. So if you notice it, actually, you'll see the date crossed out in pencil, simply because there wasn't time to write a new agenda item. It was simply, look, apparently there's some more public input that needs to happen, which is healthy, and also, at the time, we needed to find out some final resolution as to whose responsibility it was. Based on those two things, I wanted to bring it back to the council for further public discussion, further council discussion, and also to make sure that the direction that I'm pursuing is clear and that that is what this council is looking for. The direction, as I recall it from two weeks ago, was to meet with the group. In fact, at the end of the meeting, Councilman Kennedy drafted Charlie into the group and to somewhat lead it, as I recall. Charlie tried to blame me for that at the meeting, but that was you, Councilman Kennedy. And to find out what it was exactly that they were interested in the city assisting them with, and I've done that, we actually had a conversation right out there in amongst those seats that got a lot of that work done. We had the meeting, we discussed the options, and I'm prepared to move forward if that's the direction of the council, so.
Well, for clarification, my understanding is that this interchange is under the jurisdiction of Caltrans, and for this to be done, the city council would have to agree to make a request to them?
Honestly, I think it would be better for the city and better for the community, for the community to make the request and for the city to support it. There's some question, if the city were to request it, would the city then be on the hook for buying the signs, changing signs, doing all the sign work? That's really a state responsibility.
Actually, if I can speak to that, I actually got an email this morning from Sandbag to make sure, and I'm more than willing to provide that to anybody here on the dais as well as public, that if the city does do this, we will have to pay for all the signage from south of the interchange, north of the interchange, to change everything that Caltrans has already done. They've already ordered the signage for that interchange, and so they wanted to make sure that I was fully aware, and this council's fully aware, that that would be a cost borne by the city, which is something new that I just got today, based upon the article that was in the paper today. But again, Caltrans is the one that told me that it was the state legislature that had to do this. I don't know why or who told Senator Donnelly that we could do it. Theoretically, we can name the bridge whatever we want, but you won't get the signage on the freeway. At most, we might have some signs on the bridge, but there would be virtually unseen. So it has to be the state legislature that passes a bill, it has to be the governor that signs it, and it has to be the state that pays for that signage, because this city doesn't have the money to pay for that. So it doesn't matter whether it was Martin Luther King Jr. or we were naming it after someone that formerly sat on the city council. We can't name it after Mayor Cox. He's still here with us.
No, no.
So, you know, I mean, that becomes the issue. This signage is not cheap, as I'm sure you all know.
And the interesting thing was, Ryan sent me a copy of that email, and we're not talking about changing any signage, changing anything about what's already been ordered. It's simply, and the closest one that I can think of is that the 210-15 interchange, that's the Bill E. Leonard interchange, and it's simply a very respectful green sign coming from either direction that simply says Billy Leonard interchange. It's not big highway signs on top of the bridge, beside the bridge, anything. It's simply a mention. And that's what Charlie and the group of concerned citizens and I have talked about.
Okay.
Much simpler than what I think Sandbag was thinking we were talking about.
Well, I think this is put on the agenda because there's continuing dialogue, continuing questions. We ought to keep everybody informed. It'll be on the agenda again. There'll be additional information. Hopefully, we'll get all the answers before a final decision is made, but as Councilmember McEckern said, he just got an email this morning, new information is going, but we'll all be equally informed by the time we get to make a decision.
Okay, let me tell you what I personally feel about this particular request and the action that we're asking to be taken. First of all, I don't think Dr. King would want a big hurrah between the citizens of this Victor Valley about putting a sign up in his honor. That's number one. And what I feel after reading the Daily Mess this morning and what was in it, I feel like that's what's in the low current brewing, and I don't want to see that happen. The other thing is, I think that we live in a very diverse part of California. Victor Valley, there's no little pockets of blacks or whites or here and there and all that kind of stuff. We are very diverse communities up here, and I think that it would honor him if we all got together and sit down and push in a very diversified manner to make this happen. I don't want to see a lot of adversity going on about this overpass. I think if he were to come back and he would say, "Put it on hold, forget it," I don't need that type of recognition. This man was for unity throughout the world, as well as stateside communities and anything else we can think of. He was all about, "Let's get it together." And I don't know if there was ever a request before we requested this to be done. I think now it seems like it's an adverse action coming on just because of who requested it and who is for it, and I don't want to see that. I don't even want to be a part of it. So if we can't get this together because the last closing of your council, I think everybody, just about everybody up there, thought it was a great idea.
Thank you, Mr. Glasper. What we're going to do is continue dialogue with you. My understanding is you're kind of the point person, and that's who I hope the dialogue continues with. You are in contact with all the players. We appreciate your comments. The next individual is Cheryl Perkins.
Good evening, Mayor Cox, city council members. I am Cheryl Thomas Perkins, and I've been a resident in Victorville for about 13 years, but my association with the city goes back a lot farther because my parents moved up here a few years before I did. I had the pleasure of meeting Councilmember Vias and Mayor Cox at the recent State of the City event. I don't know if you remember that. Mayor Protem, we met not too long ago, I think at the Victorville opportunity, and we weren't sure where you were going to be at that time. And I've had the opportunity to work professionally with both Doug and Keith in my profession as a senior government affairs representative for Los Angeles World Airports. I'm here today just to support this naming of the Naskwali interchange for Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I was so excited when I first heard about this a few weeks ago. Someone kind of, actually, it was my mom, sent me an email, and she thought I'd be interested in it. I hadn't heard about it prior to then. So I was really excited about it, and I've been sharing the information with the folks and told everyone who knows anything about it to put me in touch with anyone else who's involved with it, and I would lend my voice and my support. So I look forward to the clarification that we're going to get, because again, we've heard a couple of different things here today. I do know as far as the request and the timing of the request, that there have been subsequent suggestions, and I would ask that you consider, if nothing else, just the timing of that. This is not going to be clearly the last interchange or new street or This is not going to be clearly the last interchange or new street or area which can be named after someone in the city of Victorville. So if this one can be taken in its merit, clearly, I can't imagine a more deserving person on the local, national front, as well as internationally. Dr. King, you know, stood for everyone, and again, I mean, we can go on and on about his contributions. And I think that even personally, anyone in Victorville, we could probably get signatures from a lot of folks, hundreds of thousands, who could say how we have personally benefited, you know, in our lives from Dr. King, and relate it, you know, more directly to anything we do here in the community. So I thank you for your consideration. I hope that we do move forward. If there is opportunity or need for myself, as well as others who I might be affiliated with, to help move this forward, feel free to contact me. I look forward to dialogue and to the progress of this very worthy cause. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Last card is Dennis Morris.
Counsel, thank you for letting me speak. Regarding the interchange, you know, Niskuale, La Mesa, Off-Ramp, you know, those two streets, and changing, you know, when I, the information that I got, we were going to be changing some names of the streets, and, you know, the unintended consequences of naming, you know, renaming streets can be catastrophic, you know, quite difficult, because it's not, it's easy for the council to change the name of a street, but then you have GPS and Google and all of the mapmakers that have to change the names of their maps to satisfy that. I would like to encourage the board on this matter, naming an interchange, or get the will of the people, bring it to the vote of the people. That's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We didn't, the council doesn't anticipate having any kind of a long discussion on this tonight. I can tell everyone that we've had a lot of input on this. We have a lot of interested parties. I think that the council that you're looking at is extremely sensitive to these kinds of situations. We absolutely want to move forward to resolve this issue, if we possibly can, with no one's feelings getting hurt and everyone being heard. On the other hand, we don't intend to eliminate anyone. We cannot afford to take the chance of eliminating somebody in case of somebody else or choosing between deserving peoples, and this is making our job extremely difficult. But that's why we're here, and we do appreciate the input, and unless some council member, unless one of the council members has something to add, I think we will have this back on the agenda as we progress on this. And if there are comments, I know that the comments that are coming to me, I'm forwarding to the city manager. I want everybody to understand that the city council places us on the agenda for discussion because we cannot and will not meet privately to discuss this. We all believe this has to be a very open discussion, very transparent, so that the public knows exactly what we're doing, and that's why this is on the agenda. So for the council members who have suggestions, recommendations, or questions, also direct those to Mr. Doug Robertson. Any further on this item?
I always have something to add.
I've noticed that.
Question, Doug, are we going to have a walkway along that bridge?
There is a sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Yes.
I've been giving this a lot of thought, frankly. My wife and I have been talking about it at some length. I'm not in favor of renaming streets. I'm opposed to it, I don't mind telling you that. Don't have a particular interest in renaming the interchange, and I've been giving a lot of thought to Dr. King. And I guess my question is, we all understand that Martin Luther King was probably the most prominent black civil rights leader in the 20th century. I think we'd all agree with that. But he wasn't the only one. There was a man that stood behind him the whole way, named Whitney Young, who was vitally important to that movement. There were some others. To me, one of the most inspired leaders was Julian Bond, not very well-known. But I think there was a man who pushed a much heavier rock up a much steeper hill, and his name was Frederick Douglass. And I think you could stop 100 high school students walking off campus, and they wouldn't have the faintest idea who Frederick Douglass was. Couldn't tell you.
Which is a shame. Which would be a shame.
It's a shame. It's a terrible shame. Booker T. Washington, that name is sort of familiar to people. I doubt anybody knows he was one of the great intellectuals of the 19th century and first president of Tuskegee University. You know, and it's a long list, folks. But I read something very interesting in a paper this morning about Susan B. Anthony, another name that the average kid coming out of high school wouldn't begin to be able to tell you what she did or who she was. After the 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendment were passed, I want you all to, you may not know this, but only half of the black population was given some semblance of the rights of citizenship, and those were black men. Black women had no say, they had no vote, any more than white women, or Hispanic women, or any other women. Susan B. Anthony spent 60 years of her life crusading for the right of women. Half of our population have a say, and it happened after she died. This is all my way of saying, if we're going to do something with this bridge, and I think Dr. King would probably like this idea if he were here, let's do more than just honor Dr. King. Let's use it as a way to honor everybody who's played an important, major role in civil rights in this country, and it doesn't have to be just him. I'd string that bridge with plaques, and I'd go through a process of deciding who ought to be there, and I'd want the world to know, we have a civil rights bridge over our freeway, and we're commemorating and honoring the important people in American history who've allowed this to happen. And I think that is broad enough that even Dr. King would say that's probably a pretty good idea. Let's think about it.
Thank you for your comments. I had asked that, I knew there was a council policy someplace because the city council years ago had grappled with using individuals' names for naming streets or parks, and that was occurred, and the policy was adopted CP 833 back in 1983. It hasn't been an easy thing to do, and it's going to, not, no matter what you do on this, it's not going to be easy, and it's not going to go away, and every few years, it's going to come back. And so we'll just hope for the best. If there's no further item comments on this, I'd like to move ahead on item number 20. I have a card on item number 20. Item number 20 is the Red Flex contract. We're going to have a report from the city attorney. Before we do that, is it Chris Armator? I'm sorry, I can't really read this.
... mayor and city council members. My name is Chris Armington. I'm a traffic safety educator.
I'm sorry, would you pronounce your last name, please?
Chris Armington.
Okay, thank you.
Armington. And I am in the board member of Driving School Association of California, and also certified AAA at one time, National Safety Council, master driver of the U.S. Army. And I really think that the red light flicks, I didn't get the $2 million, okay? I just read that in the newspaper today. But I think I'm fairly much expert in traffic safety. I have no degree in traffic safety, but I've been doing it for about 23 years. Started out in the military, okay? And I really think that it's going to be a bad move for us to remove that Red Flex system too early, or maybe just let it go into oblivion or whatever, but it does save lives. I teach traffic safety, and of course, it has reduced the amount of individuals coming to these traffic schools that we have just because of that camera up there. And it is a deterrent for anyone to go through that, knowing it is there. And of course, if it, I believe, I could remember that the first 10 months that it was installed, it comes from Daily Press, it says it reduced collisions, it reduced injuries, and it reduced the amount of death in our streets in Victorville. So how much does one life cost? Well, I think it's more than one traffic signal with a camera. So if you guys are going to be asking me if we should keep it there, I think we should. I always said that when I go through a Chamber of Commerce briefing. I think we should apply traffic lights with cameras throughout the United States, any camera, because it's really easy to beat. That, I have done that, I studied it, I teach traffic safety in front of 200, 300 instructors just to let them know how it works. And you know what? I think it's just education, plain and simple. I told the Chamber of Commerce before, in the meeting, I said, "Yes, you can beat that." I said, "How do you do that?" "Well, look at the light." I think it's just simple education, and that's where it is. Right now, I think, I don't think you guys know that, the California Highway Patrol has introduced with, of course, one of our legislature, an assembly or senate bill that says that they're moving the age up to if the person does not take driver's education, that they will not be able to get a driver's license until they're 20 years old. It was introduced last month, in February. So I think when the California Highway Patrol agrees with, including the DMV, that the age should be raised up to that, I think there is a good reason. It's all about education. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's the only card I have on that. The city attorney has submitted supplemental information, and I'd ask Audrey DuBortnowski, the city attorney, to speak on this item at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. At the request of the council, we looked into the issues that arose out of articles concerning the Red Flex contract in Chicago, and allegations that certain individuals associated with Red Flex had actually bribed council members in Chicago to get the contract. We researched that information, and there are problems with that contract. However, as of this date, Chicago hasn't terminated their contract. What has happened is Red Flex has done an internal investigation, has fired several of their key personnel related to the bribery charges, and as far as we are aware to date, there is still no charges filed. As to how that impacts our contract, we have a contract with Red Flex that runs through March of 2015. We reviewed the terms and provisions of that contract, and the activities that occurred in Chicago would not give us any grounds at this point to terminate. We have the ability to terminate for cause, but there's no reason to believe that what has occurred in Chicago is happening with the Red Flex individuals in California. One of the things potentially that we could do, as I point out in my memo, is we could ask for further assurances from Red Flex with respect to their ability to continue to perform, and I suspect they'd be willing to give us that. What most of the communities have done that have voiced opposition to the Red Flex transactions has been to wait until the contracts expire and allow them to terminate and not renew them. And in fact, that is what the Chicago outcome looks like, will be the likely outcome in Chicago. They have indicated, the mayor has indicated, their desire to let it terminate and then not renew it. So as of, as it stands right now, there's nothing to indicate that we would have grounds to terminate the agreement for cause, and no doubt, if we try to terminate it, I suspect we'd be in litigation. We certainly can wait till expires, and you have no obligation to renew it, but that'll be a decision for this council.
Thank you. Any questions from the members of council? Any comments? We will, I'm going to make a comment on this. At the time that I came back and got familiar with the red light, the Red Flex contract, I talked to the individuals who were enforcing the traffic in the city of Victorville at that time, and one of the things that bothered those individuals, as well as the people getting the tickets, was the amount of fine. And I was surprised to learn that even though it occurs in the city, and it's in the vehicle code, it's set by the state legislature, and it's a tremendous increase in fines from just a few years ago, which gives the appearance that the legislature is simply trying to raise money. I have never seen any studies that indicate that because you increased the fine amount, that it made it any safer, although I suppose it could be argued, I'm still looking for those statistics. I'm also concerned that, it seems to me that I would be willing to request the legislature to look at the amounts of these fines because they appear to be excessive, and I think that's borne out by the fact that many people who get a ticket and go before the judge, what I'm hearing, and I've never been in the courtroom, that those are being substantially reduced. The judges are looking for compliance. They're not there to raise revenue, hooray for them, but I think that they recognize that these fines are outrageous, too. So I think there's some other things that we might want to do. We belong to the League of California Cities. I am concerned what the other cities are doing, but in every case where we've had individuals to come before this council and have indicated that they're going to file class action lawsuits, and on and on and on, they've lost. So we have the last one that's coming before the California Supreme Court. That will settle the argument one way or the other, and then it becomes a decision of what the council wants to do. If the rule that they cannot be used, that will void our contract automatically, if I understand this correctly, and there may be some formalities that we would have to go through in a few days. If they ruled that it's valid, then the next question would be, we also have a valid contract, and what will the council do when it's up in 2015, Mr. Trump?
2015, correct.
2015. So we'll just have to wait and see.
And if I might add to your comments, you are correct that right now, pending before the California Supreme Court, is the case of People versus Goldsmith, and that will decide whether or not the standards for evidence or evidence to be provided and/or required in connection with Red Flex violations. You mentioned correctly, if the court comes down and finds that the evidence is inadmissible in a court, that would give us grounds to terminate our contract immediately.
I have just been handed a card requesting to speak on agenda item number 20 from Mr. Samuel Lee.
... mayor and council members and that. Item 20, the red flag, I think that it's, I think so many things about it is unfair. I think that, number one, the timing on it. I think the timing is very different from the other traffic signals. I haven't done the study yet, but I plan to do it. I'm sure that if we did a proper study of that, we would find that the timing is, well, I don't know how many seconds, but it's shorter than the other traffic signals. And in essence, it seemed to be somewhat of a trap, because you mentally get used to a traffic signal changing, giving you X amount of time if you're, come up to a light that is getting ready to change and, or haven't changed yet, and you have a certain amount of seconds to get through it properly, like all the rest of the lights are. But this, these particular ones that are only installed in certain areas where it seems that, you know, heavy traffic, easily, a lot of people traveling through there, and as I said, they set the timing so quickly until it seems to be unfair. I realize that it brings in a lot of revenue for the city.
No, it doesn't.
Oh, it does not?
No, it does not.
Didn't know, I thought it did.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we, I've tried to clarify this over and over and over, for all the critics who say the city, I was not here, but the city did it for revenue. If they did, it's a colossal failure. It does not provide revenue for the city. But go ahead.
I thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. But, but as I said, it, and the amount is extravagant, almost $500. And then if, I heard someone say that it's good, and it does a lot of good and prevents terrible accidents and maybe even deaths, but if that's the case, why don't they have them at all, at all, the traffic lights? You know, if it's that good. But I think they, as I said, they have them there, and it seems to be so unfair, the way it's set up at those certain locations, number one, and number two, that the timing on those things are wrong. They're not standard, as the other lights are. And it sets up an unfair situation where it seems that people are being entrapped, and because their mindset is on, a light is going to go from, you know, green to orange to red in X amount of seconds, and that's not the case at these points.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. This item has come up before, and I've received the explanation in regard to the timing of the yellow lights based upon the speed of the traffic that's coming up to the light. of the yellow lights based upon the speed of the traffic that's coming up to the light. You know, if it's running at 50 miles an hour, that yellow light's longer than it if it's on a street with 15 or 25 miles an hour. But rather than to get into that debate or try to discuss that at this point in time, that issue has been raised before, and there are many people who believe that somehow it involves a, being a speed trap, which by the way is illegal in the state of California, not in the south, but it is in the state of California. I would ask that, that at least the traffic engineer submit some information to the city council members, so that we'll all have the information on how that yellow light is set. Is there any further discussion? Mr. McKecklin wanted to speak on this matter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I had asked that this come before the council for a couple of reasons. One, I think, in looking back, as a policy decision that this council got into, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But the bigger issue to me is the constitutionality of the red light cameras, I don't believe they are constitutional, and I'm hoping that the California Supreme Court will ultimately find that. So, I am in favor that we continue to monitor this. But, the bigger reason I brought this up, and I asked that this be agendized, and the council have it before us, is because this is the very issue that we have been so scrutinized on before by members of the public, the grand jury, and for us not to even discuss it would be, you know, flying in the face of those recommendations. So, fact of the matter is, is that it's well documented, Redflex has actually admitted to wrongdoing in this case, and so for us, as a city who has a contract with this particular company, not to discuss it, not to continually monitor it, would be the wrong thing to do. So, I'm not, you know, I understand that we have a contract, that it would be very costly for us to get out of, it's not my desire to see the city incur those particular costs, but I do think we should monitor it. I do think that if, if anything does come down, that for whatever reason allows us to get out of it, I'd hope that our city attorney and his office would bring that to our attention and let us know.
Absolutely. In fact, we got the e-brief today, as it was, from the Supreme Court indicating that the briefing has now been completed, so oral argument's gonna be the next thing before the Supreme Court, we'll let you know as soon as there is a decision.
Any further comments?
How long do you think that would take?
It depends on the Supreme Court's schedule, they have a lot of discretion as to when they're gonna hear this. The fact that it's been fully briefed, it's probably on their calendars right now, and I'll try and get you an update, if we can get some kind of date as to when they expect to hear the oral arguments. And then, once it has been argued, they again have time to render their decision. It could be months.
Do we have a cost of what it would cost to terminate the contract?
We, back in 2010, when the contract was modified to take out the approaches that weren't beneficial to the city, we attempted to put some numbers together, and the unfortunate thing is that there is no clause that allows us to get out of the contract, say for convenience. Typically, a contract may have a clause like that, they would call it termination for convenience. There's no clause. So, essentially, we could terminate the contract and go into some kind of negotiation or lawsuit, but ultimately, Redflex would have a starting figure of their anticipated revenue, their anticipated profit on the cameras. They do make something on the cameras, I don't know how much they make. I know that we don't enjoy any revenues, that wasn't the intent of the program. So, I don't have a number for you, but it would be effectively however much they would make between now and June 30th of 2015 would be, I think, their likely starting point.
And I know the answer to this, but I want the city attorney to explain to the people that we don't have control over the judges that don't uphold our constitutional rights. Can you explain that to the public? Because I get a lot of angry constituents that are very angry, they think that the city controls the courthouse. And I try to explain to them that we have nothing to do with that, and that they're only gonna go by what the Supreme Court says.
Right, and that's the typical separation of powers, it boils down even to, at a state level, the judiciary is responsible for interpreting the laws, they look at the laws of the state of California and things like this, and they will be the ultimate determination as to whether or not this is constitutional. All of the challenges to date on Redflex have been as to the evidence, and the argument is that when you get the ticket, you as the person being fined don't have the opportunity always to question the person that's basically charging you with the violation. To date, they have been upheld by every court that it is not a violation of the Constitution, but that is the challenge that's before the Supreme Court right now at the state of California. All of the decisions to date have been basically superior court decisions. Some courts have thrown out Redflex decisions based on the inability of the person getting the fine to question the person that basically puts the system into place. It's very similar to the radar. You know, if you get a radar ticket, typically the officer has to show up in court and has to testify that the radar was calibrated and everything was in order. Here, the difference is that basically, the courts have given some deference to the Redflex process already being calibrated and in accord. You're absolutely right, it's the California Supreme Court that will be the ultimate decision-maker on this, and determine whether or not they are constitutional or not.
So, basically, if the violator, alleged violator, is savvy enough in the law, they could get off on their tickets by just making the argument that they don't have a right to face their accuser.
And again, that will depend on the court, because a judge's, depending on which way the judge has ruled in the past, he may agree with them or disagree with them. And then, that person's option is to appeal that decision, and ultimately, that's what's happened with the Supreme Court case.
And we don't exactly have, we're trying to recover financially from the past and the economy, and we just, is it fair to say, Doug, that we don't have any spare change to throw around for a legal fight?
That is very fair to say, yes. If we did, I suspect you'd have other priorities.
Right, and that would be keeping our police on the streets.
Exactly.
And you can probably anticipate, I would assume Redflex would try and litigate heavily because they'd be concerned about this being precedential for other cities, they have contracts with numerous cities throughout the state of California and throughout the country, and they don't wanna try and lose any of these cases, so.
So, for those of you who have been ticketed, you've just got some free legal advice, so use it.
You know, and there is another fairness issue in play here, and I've talked to two prior chiefs, our local captains, I haven't talked to Sam about this, but the sheriff exercises considerable amount of authority to throw out tickets himself or his deputies when it's a close call. Or there might have been justification, that the view of the light was blocked because you were behind a truck. I mean, there have been a number of those kind of cases, so if you think it's an unfair ticket, the first place to go is the sheriff's office. I'm getting a head nod from Sam, so I think he would agree with that.
And you should also check the evidence against you to make sure they actually have the picture of you, that the license plate is correct. A lot of tickets are getting thrown out because that evidence is not there. You know, if it's not a clear picture, they're not gonna write, they're not gonna proceed with the ticket.
And I think a lot of times that they're hoping that you just come forward and pay the ticket, so.
All right. Thank you for your comments. I'm sure that as evidence comes forward, or the decision comes out of the California Supreme Court, this will automatically be agendized, and you will all hear about this as it occurs. Agenda item number 21, this would be for items for the upcoming city council agenda. I think I started on the right last time, we'll start on the left.
I don't have anything.
McKecklin.
Yes, I had the opportunity to speak with Councilman Leonard from Asperia today. He and I have had discussions about having another joint meeting since we have new councils regarding the Bear Valley Road off-ramp, on-ramp. As you may recall, a few years back, this council voted unanimously to move forward with that, Asperia was a split 3-2, so it did not move forward. But he believes that Asperia has a new desire to relook at that, so I'm asking that the council consider scheduling a joint meeting with the Asperia City Council to discuss the Bear Valley Road off-ramp, on-ramp.
Question?
On the northbound side.
Do we need any report from the city traffic engineer, or do we need the traffic city engineer at that meeting?
That is entirely up to the council.
Not to have a meeting.
Certainly, it wouldn't, you could direct us to start.
Well, I just, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I don't wanna have a meeting with Asperia and say, "Yay, wonderful idea," and have our engineer to say, "It's ridiculous, unlawful, and you can't do it." I'd like to get the answer first, so I know what my options are.
We could certainly agendize that for even April 2nd, there's enough information available from the last time that was, this was studied, for the city engineer, director of public works, to provide information to the council, wouldn't take any study work at all.
I don't wanna hold up the meeting, the proposed meeting with Asperia, I think, yes, we need it, but I would sure like to be brief with our staff first, can we?
We can put it on the April 2nd meeting.
Okay, Doug, do we need to have it agendized, or can we just have the engineer submit the information to each of the council members?
I think it would be better to have it agendized.
All right.
So, the agenda will be put together, well, filed tomorrow, so we'll make sure that it's on for April 2nd. So, there's no, literally, this was discussed, what, two years ago, three years ago?
Yeah.
So, there's no new information, so this would be just refreshing information that's already been shared once.
All right. Other items?
I have some, I have three of them. This week is the National Sunshine Transparency Week, and it's an organization for, it's called California Forward, and they're trying to bring awareness to transparency in government, and how important it is for the people to get involved. And I think with Victorville's past, that it would be a good idea to try to get more involved with this, and I had a former resident, I think everyone knows him up here, Michael Stevens, that's right, he was a former PR for MWA, and he's, he moved to, retired to Arizona, and he was telling me about his city in Arizona that has this sunshine review transparency checklist on their websites. And basically, it has all sorts of information that people can access and just be completely transparent, and it takes a while to get to where they're at, but it just shows that we're getting there and growing in that, in that direction. And I thought, I would like the city to agendize this, to consider getting involved in this transparency checklist for our city.
Objections? Forward this information to our manager, the city clerk, and have it agendized.
Okay, and then also, I would like maybe a report on, I guess it would be a report from our city engineer for the speed limits that have been increased, and, you know, it just kinda disturbed me if there were schools there and that sort of thing, if we could just get a report and why this occurred, and, you know, and if we think it's safe, and what we can do to change it if we need to, to keep the kids safe. And then, and also, I just wanted to also acknowledge that this was the second time we had community members come forward and talk about animal control issues, so maybe if we can have a report or a presentation to see if, if we can help with resources in that department, or if we're lacking in that department, how we can help the people be safe, and make sure that the dogs aren't running and roaming free. And then the last thing I wanted to ask for was a, oh, are we all okay with that last one?
I wanna speak to both of those when you've finished, if you can.
Okay, well, we gotta do it, because, go ahead, do it now.
Well, I do, I also wanna see that report from the city engineer, because I know that you have to do the traffic studies, the 90 percentile, or whatever it is now, and I haven't read the law recently, and anything else is arbitrary, and it can be thrown out and constitute speed traps, and so, he doesn't have any choice about how, what he sets the speed limit based upon the study. I think it's really important that he give that information to the council. We have an open discussion, so that the public understands that we have no authority whatsoever to arbitrarily set a speed limit in this city.
Even if it's unsafe?
We, no, that's not our determination, it's.
The study actually determines the safe speed.
Does.
That's the purpose of the study.
Purpose of the study.
There's no way we can appeal it?
Well, we'll talk about that, I'm sure there must be some ways that we can, but.
This is one of Mr. McGlade's favorite topics, so, we'll all look forward to a lengthy, exciting presentation from him on the 90th percentile speed studies.
Okay, and then, the last thing I would like to agendize is a presentation on the grand jury's findings and our response, and if we have completed everything, so I think we're almost coming up on a year, I think it's almost a year?
It's, we're coming up on a year, well, a year would be June 29th since they issued the report.
Uh-huh.
We're about six months away from our response being filed with them.
Oh, okay, so, we haven't responded to that?
No, we responded, yeah. We're about six months past when we responded to their report.
Okay, and I would just like to see where we're at, and, you know, if we've completed that, or what we need to do still.
Okay.
Okay?
I think it's a good point, I've been asked about that, and I have neither read the city staff's response. Another grand, the grand jury report I did read, but I didn't see our response, nor have I seen their response to our response, which is normal by all grand juries. So, I'm looking forward to any information you have to be presented at a later time.
There was no response to our response.
That's why you said that.
Maybe they were so impressed by it that they decided to just move on.
Mr. Kennedy?
No, nothing.
I have nothing. Last item, agenda item 22, any reports from the staff or the council members, and this time I'll start to my right. Mr. Kennedy?
No.
I just wanted to say that there is nobody on this council that voted in those red light cameras, just for the record. We're just trying to clean it up.
McKecklin? I heard you voted, never mind.
No, I didn't vote for her.
Councilmember Garcia?
I wasn't here then.
That's what I always say, "I wasn't here." Doug, do you have any items?
I have a couple of announcements. Number one is we got some unfortunate news today. Part of our budget that we discussed back in June with the city council was monies that the state had, I term it stolen, I suppose they probably don't call it that, vehicle license fees that are, should come to the city. It's about $460,000 annually to our revenues that the state stole last year. The League of Cities has sued the state, and recently, in fact, this morning, we got notice that they have lost the lawsuit. We were hopeful that we would get, last year's $460,000, and this year's $460,000, although knowing the state, we didn't budget for it, so thankfully, it's not an impact to our budget short-term, but long-term, it means probably close to half a million dollars that we don't have that the state does have, and I believe that it's ours. The League is looking at appealing that superior court ruling, but, you know, based on their last few lawsuits the League's been involved in, I'm a little bit concerned, to be honest, about their success or lack thereof. Another item, Macy's had their soft opening, the charitable event, and tomorrow morning is their, or tomorrow is their grand opening, the ribbon cutting is at 9:45. If you haven't shopped there enough, come on back out, we love that sales tax. And then, lastly, it's spring cleaning time, the, I was given this memo, and I'm not gonna read it, it's fairly lengthy. Community cleanup day is coming up April 13th. For anyone who wants to volunteer to help clean up our city, get a group together, you need to contact the solid waste division by March 28th to receive a T-shirt with the sponsors' names and the thank you from the city on it. Anyone who's interested can call City Hall and be directed, but if you have your pencils out, the number is 955-4817 to volunteer for that.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And thank all of you for coming tonight, being patient, and hopefully you've learned something from these proceedings. We will do our best to keep you informed. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, good night.